Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. A meeting announcement, council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the city channel and live streamed on the city channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Eric.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Eric.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Seven members, President.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. As we join our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and our next order of business is proclamations. Do we have any to be read into the record, ma'am clerk?
No.
Okay, thank you. So that moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And I would just like to remind our guests or speakers that every one of the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted, nor will threats. May we have the first speaker, please?
The first speaker is Mel Packer, followed by Zachary Michaels.
Good morning, council members. You know, we have spoken before at these council meetings. I want to speak particularly about the
Please state your name and neighborhood, please.
I'm sorry, Mel Packer. I live in Point Breeze.
Thank you.
I want to speak particularly about the fact, the courageous bill that you all passed, landmark legislation protecting renters in those cities, something that's very much in need at the present time. We all know that we have a mayor who's a pretty savvy mayor when it comes to using the media, using Twitter, et cetera, et cetera. If there's anything big going on in the city of Pittsburgh, such as opening a new store of about 1,500 square feet in the strip district, that's a florist shop or a golf shop, he's on the front page of the Pittsburgh Post Gazette, cutting a ribbon for that. If there's a new building, a new development going up, it's going to aid which donors and developers, he's out there promoting that. The mayor of this city has done absolutely nothing to promote the bill that you very courageously passed protecting your constituents. He's been silent on it. He has not tweeted about it. As far as I know, he's done nothing on Facebook, and he's held no press conferences about it. There's something going on here, and I think we understand what's going on here. It's election time. The mayor is indebted to the big developers in the city. He's indebted to the banks. He's indebted to the big money folks. He's not indebted to low-income renters. He needs to be out there doing something about this bill and publicizing it so people understand what protections they have, but he's not going to do that. So that's up to you. I think the council should be pretty angry at the fact that they passed a bill which was supported by constituents and supported by nine to for your, to your credit, by a clear majority, by a clear unanimous vote, and that nothing has been done about it. In fact, it sat on his desk for about three days, and to this day, he has not tweeted a thing about it. It's up to you to do something about this. The low-income renters in this city need protection. You gave them that protection. They may not know they have that protection. Council should be mad. Council should be out there holding a press conference, and I hope that you'll do this to inform people what their rights are, that we have passed a bill, that we have done what happened way back. And I remember this, way back when I lost my job while holding steel in the industry when bills went down, that the county sheriff, Jean Coon, actually refused to foreclose on property, took a very courageous action. You have taken similar courageous actions by aiding renters and banning evictions. You could also pass another bill if you wanted to, and you'd be advised to try and ban foreclosures of the mom-and-pop landlords, and the banks can afford to do that. They can afford to wait. In any case, I'm hoping that council will get out there, will hold a press conference, will publicize the fact that you passed an evictions bill, and that renters in the city have a great deal of protection if they know they haven't. That's up to you. Please do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarity's sake, the mayors did not allow the bill to sit on his desk for three days. I signed it Thursday night, and he signed it immediately after. So I just wanted to add clarity. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Zachary Michaels.
Zachary Michaels. Just want to make sure he's not here.
Okay, next speakers, Anne Wright, followed by Jacob Klinger.
Thank you. I also want to thank the council for passing the eviction moratorium ordinance two weeks ago on March 2nd. I also want to encourage further efforts to provide sufficient funding and support to the Commission on Human Relations to be able to fulfill their role in implementing the system for vetting which potential eviction actions do or do not meet the criteria for good cause stated in the ordinance. As many of you know, I've been monitoring eviction filings and case statuses since last spring. From what I've seen over the last two weeks, the behavior of landlords has not yet been impacted by the ordinance. There have been 52 filings in the magisterial districts serving Pittsburgh on or since March 2nd, 35 of them since the 5th, when the ordinance was signed. During 2021, there have been an average of 25 filings per week, and there were 31 last week, so that it has not yet decreased. There have been 25 judgments for plaintiff in Pittsburgh on or since 32, 15 of them since 35. There's been a long-term average over the last 180 days of five per week, so that has not gone down, although there have been record numbers of hearings in the last two weeks, so that's kind of hard to judge. There have been seven orders for possession since 32, five of them since 35. Again, that's approximately, you know, what we've been seeing. I believe that this eviction moratorium is groundbreaking and has a lot of potential, but it needs more support in terms of outreach and in terms of enforcement. There is work going on with the courts to provide better information in advance of filings and in advance of requests for orders for possession to inform them. There's work going on, doing outreach to the constables in order to have them understand the implications of executing orders for possession in Pittsburgh during this time. It would be very helpful if there could be more support for this publicly stated and potentially letters to folks like the constables and the magisterial district judges to help support the distribution of information and a show of authority behind this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Ma'am clerk, is it Jacob?
Yes, it's Jacob.
Thank you. Jacob?
Nice. Where are you from?
No.
Okay.
Jacob Klinger is here?
Yeah, I see him. He's here, but
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, my name is Jacob. My phone number is he and him. I'm with the Pittsburgh Union of Regional Renters. What we are talking about today is not just inaction, but, you know, a decision by the mayor that is indefensible. And I'm sure he and he are listening to this, but I don't expect any of you to defend it, because you worked very hard over a series of weeks to consider this situation. You worked very hard for Lindsay Powell, who worked very hard herself to consider this situation. And even in the dying moments of resistance to Deb Gross's protections for tenants, they put the burden back on landlords. When Lindsay Powell, to her credit, would ask point-blank, you know, is this illegal, Councilman Burgess, basically asking her to say so, she said, no, you can do with this thing. And we know this. We also know that when you get sued for something, it doesn't make it illegal. And we also know that at least as of Friday, the plaintiffs that sued the city over the legality of this eviction moratorium haven't even bothered to deliver the papers to the city law department, which leads me to believe that they know they don't need to. Honestly, I'm not really encouraged by the idea that the mayor signed this Thursday night as opposed to Friday, because if he had declared a Taco Tuesday, there would have been a press conference of balloons and little children running around in the park. Y'all know that. That's how he moves. But I'm not here to drag all y'all through that. Like, the fact of the matter is like, we have no choice but to view this decision, to not communicate, to not publicize, to not enforce, to not speak about this anti eviction legislation, as the mayor taking the opportunity to further his housing agenda with the consequences of a pandemic. Now, you may be uncomfortable with that assertion. You may be uncomfortable with these questions, but I wouldn't be sitting here asking them if he hadn't spent two weeks doing nothing. And you know this, because we were pretty chummy last week. And, you know, Councilman Kraus, I really appreciate your contributions to the conversation two weeks ago. And particularly, you know, respected your efforts to say, hey, you know, the mayor coming in at the last second this week, the mayor coming in at the last second a couple of weeks ago, there's nothing nefarious. That's just how things go. Now, I never believed you, but it gave me some pause, but this is ridiculous. There's no defending this. As anything other than an easy chance to get rid of undesirables that a near decade of his housing policies are already punished for, in his view clearly, holding down property values with the color of their skin, or their lack of income, or both. Right now, the mayor's decisive inaction is punishing people who really never been broke before this year and probably could have walked down Walnut Street comfortably to go get a beer with him and Kathy. This betrayed the hard work you did, that Lindsay Powell did, that we did for months. And now, I would like to share with you some things that the mayor has chosen to tweet about, other than the groundbreaking eviction legislation that you all worked so hard to pass in the last few weeks. For instance, we have some dogs tattooed on me, another dog, some legislation he didn't pass. We also have
The next speaker is Ikahana Hal Makena, followed by Bailey Brown.
Thank you. Leading the peace in La Cacha La Cateen. My title is Ikahana Hal Makena. I am the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aborigine American People. Today, I would like to speak to the voices of city council, to the people who represent city council about accountability. I would like to throw that word back into the mix. And I would like to remind you all who you work for. You work for the people. I'd like to take this opportunity to appeal to the moral fabric of your conscience. Years ago, there was a bullet that pierced my body. That bullet came from the revolver of a city police officer. And I will remind you all that I live with a daily pain as a result of the gunshot that was inflicted upon me, being caught in the crossfire as a victim. Have I received any accountability? No. Do I deserve accountability? Yes. I have permanent scars. I have a permanent injury. And the pain is immense. And so I would like for city council to reach out to me, to rectify this situation, to add redress to this situation. I come on this line on the weekly basis to speak about the rights of indigenous people. Yes, indeed, and I will continue to do so until I have no more breath, because it is my duty to speak about our rights. That must be adhered to. But this personal journey, this personal experience has been overlooked, and I can only imagine that there are many people out here like myself who have also been maimed, injured, or permanently scarred or killed. As a matter of fact, I'll name a few. David Streeter, that before the cameras were rolling, was choked to death similarly to George Floyd. Has his family received any accountability and any justice? Do they deserve it? Absolutely. Bernard Rogers, the same thing. My own flesh and blood. Jerome Smith. Michelle Rankin died as a result of the negligence, as the court so eloquently put it. If you're negligent, that means you're responsible. Something must be done.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Kim, do we have the next speaker?
Bailey Brown.
Sorry, thank you.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. Please state your name and
Yes, this is Bailey Brown in Regent Square, here to apologize that I did not come to thank you last week, but I think I would have been a little premature. I do thank the members of council for all of your efforts in passing the eviction moratorium. Thank you so much. Now, I would love for all of you to dedicate all of your efforts towards enforcing it and not allowing the mayor's office to sidestep the intent. I know that the city has been sued, and that does not change the moral import of the matter. And yeah, I don't really know what more I can say that hasn't already been said. You know, people are still being put out. People are going to get and potentially lose their lives and livelihoods from this. So please, please, please do whatever you can to enforce what you've put in a really good effort to do the right thing around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Wendy McBride, followed by Clara Weble.
Wendy's on the phone. Wendy, can you please unmute your phone? We can't hear you, Ms. McBride. If you can unmute your phone.
Star six.
Thank you. If you press star six. Can we get the next speaker, and then we'll come back to Ms. McBride when she can unmute her phone?
The last speaker is Clara Weble.
Hi, everyone. My name is Clara Weble, and I live in the neighborhood downtown, and I work with the Human Rights City Alliance. As we all know, city council and housing advocates alike have been working really hard on creating and supporting this policy needed to enforce the eviction moratorium, which would keep people housed during the pandemic, a time with devastating health and economic impacts. First, I want to say thank you for your work as a legislation truly has the potential to make a difference, and I wasn't able to make it last week. However, as the mayor has been silent on this bill passing for weeks, I'm really growing concerned. I think it's abundantly clear he does not want the protections for tenants offered by Deb Gross's amendments. So I ask, what is expected to happen next? Clearly, the eviction moratorium hasn't been effective, as just yesterday, there were 23 hearings in four different council districts, which were O'Connor's district, Burgess's district, Kraus's district, and Coghill's district. I'm speaking today to support more funding to be allocated to the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. As some of you may already know, the U.S. is having its debrief with the United Nations Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights this Thursday, and it's focusing on the Universal Periodic Review Report. The international community is watching and providing the U.S. with recommendations in regards to how to improve our human rights record. One of the most prominent recommendations from other U.N. members, so other countries, has been the need for the U.S. to support a national human rights institution and fund human rights protections. This equally applies to local institutions, as the Commission on Human Relations is Pittsburgh's opportunity to align with the U.N. standards. Please take this into consideration as housing is a human right. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And next speaker?
Clara was the last speaker, but we're going to go back to Wendy McBride.
Thank you. Wendy McBride, we see you on there. Could you please press star six to unmute your phone? Because we cannot hear you. Okay, there's something wrong. The phone's not unmuting. If somebody could get some information to Ms. McBride on what she has to do to speak a public comment for tomorrow, or if we get her on the line before the end of the meeting today, we can bring her back on. So we want our next order of business, and I apologize, Ms. McBride, I'm not sure what the issue is. And so that moves us on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers, and we will start with council member Reverend Ricky Burgess, the Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of, thank you, Councilman. Have a good morning. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he has papers.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus, for Councilman Coghill.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1297, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant to Conduct Landslide Mitigation on Mount Washington and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $9,998,250. The grant requires a match from the city, the amount of $3,332,750 for a total project cost of $13,331,000. Bill Number 1298, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Construct a Play Space in Homewood Park. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provide for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000. Bill Number 1299, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Fund the Planning of the Replacement of the Jefferson Recreation Center. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provide for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000. Bill Number 1300, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Rehabilitate the Warrington Recreation Center. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provide for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000. Bill Number 1301, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund for Site Work at the First Tee Clubhouse located in Shindley Park and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $100,000. Bill Number 1302, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Gaming Economic Development Fund for Site Work at the First Tee Clubhouse located in Shindley Park and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $194,125. Bill Number 1303, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, Entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 City VG Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Park Reconstruction by $36,000 and Increasing Play Area Improvements by $36,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1304, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for 28 Additional Days, hereby making the Declaration effective until April 13, 2021, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 1305, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Service Agreement with Patriot Gallo, Wharton, Alfano, Basick, and Rospenty LLC for Professional Legal Services in Connection with the Civil Rights Litigation for an Amount Not to Exceed $85,000.
Thank you. And Councilman, do you have a waiver, waiver of the rules for Bill 1304?
Motion to waive the rules of council so we can take Bill 1304 under final action today.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill will appear on later today for the final passage. And we have Councilman, or thank you, Councilman, and we have Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Morning, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
And that brings us on to my committee for Chair of Hearings. We have, well, first, let's take the Commission on Human Relations appointment. We have four appointments. Let's take the one for Commission on Human Relations first, please.
A Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1309, Resolution Reappointing Jennifer Pursidy as a Member of the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire March 31st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Saying then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Disposed. And Ms. Pursidy's approved. Thank you. And now let's take the three for PWA appointments, please.
Council President also presents Bill Number 1306, Resolution Appointing Mark Anthony Thomas as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a Term to Expire January 4th, 2026. Mr. Thomas will be serving in a seat that had been vacant. Bill Number 1307, Resolution Appointing Margaret McCormick Barone as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a Term to Expire January 5th, 2025. Ms. Barone will be serving in a seat that had been held by Margaret Lanier, who has retired. Bill Number 1308, Resolution Appointing Alex Sealy as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a Term to Expire January 4th of 2026. Mr. Sealy will be serving in a seat that had been held by Paul Legger, who has retired.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to hold for Councilman Kraus?
I'm sorry, Madam President. Thank you. Yes, motion to hold for interview, please.
Thank you. If we have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Saying then, we'll hold the, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll hold the appointments for interviews. Thank you, Councilman. And now that moves us on to unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business before council? Saying none, that moves on to the next order of business, which is the Committee for Final Action. We have Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1292, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for March 10, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1256, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sales, Items A Group F, 2832 Wiley, 501 Industry, 204 Walter, 1 Bridge Ridge, 1529 Brighton, and 2479 North Charles. Bill Number 1257, Resolution Repealing Items in Resolution Approved on Various Dates, which authorized the sale of property in various wards of the city due to an Incompletion of Sale, Item A, 2018 Perry's Bill. Bill Number 1258, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property having been placed for sale to adjourning property owners in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Sidewalk Program, Item A and B, 1735 McCullough and 1742 Brighton.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, will it, when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Kim, you're muted. Oh, I think she's frozen.
Yeah, I think she's frozen.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Council President Smith.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zeros.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Member. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. It moves us on to Councilmen Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1293, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for March 10, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1259, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Allegheny Inquin with an Amount Not to Exceed $6,124.99 for Animal Care Services Provided for the City, the Bureau of Police Mounted Unit. Bill Number 1260, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Sensible Products in the Amount of $21,257 for the Equipment Mounting Kits, Equipment for the New Spencer Engines for the Fire Bureau.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Saying then, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, will it, when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Mrs. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
President Kelsmith.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thanks. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Cockhill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Cockhill presents Bill Number 1294, Report of the Committee on Public Works for March 10, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1244, Resolution Granting Until 1717 Fifth LLC Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain and Use of Their Own Cost and Expense Three Structural Canopies at 1709 Fifth Avenue in the Third Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number 1245, Resolution Granting Until the University of Pittsburgh Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use of Their Own Cost and Expense a Projecting Sign at 3525 Forbes Avenue in the Fourth Ward, Third Council District. Bill Number 1246, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement with the Michael Baker for Contract Administration and Construction Inspection Service Costs Associated with the Small Grants Project Agreement and Providing for the Payment of Costs Relating to the Allegheny Circle Phase Two Not to Exceed $140,085.42, a Zero Increase from the Previous Agreement. Bill Number 1267, Ordinance Amendment the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Four, Public Places and Property Article One, Public Right-of-Way, Chapter 416, Obstructions, Section 41620, Approval Process of Sidewalk Cafe, Including Permits and Fees, to Further Extend the Effectiveness of Certain Temporary Expedited Measures for the City of Pittsburgh Sidewalk Cafe Permit Application Process, December 31, 2021. Bill Number 1271, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the City to Enter Into a Lease Agreement with Beaver Avenue Associates LLC to Provide a Lease Space at 1301 Beaver Avenue for the Purposes of Housing the Facility Maintenance Division of the Department of Public Works for the Total Cost Not to Exceed $271,616, including Utilities over a Two-Year Period with an Option for Two-One-Year Extension if Necessary at the Same Lease Rate.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, will it, when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1295, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for March 10, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1261, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840, Entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDVG Program in the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program, so as to Identify Specific Projects in City Council District Three and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operation Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents of the City.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Saying then, the bills are not ready for final asset, ah, final action. All in favor of their passage, will it, when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1296, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for March 10, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1247, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Safe Investments U.S. Warton Street Project. Bill Number 1248, Ordinance Authorizing the City to Enter Into Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement with the Bureau of Mount Oliver with regard to the City Providing Emergency Medical Services to the Bureau pursuant to the General Local Government Code. Compensation shall be $45,000 over a Three-Year Term. Bill Number 1249, Ordinance Authorizing the City to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement with the Bureau of Wilkinsburg for Providing Fire and Emergency Management Services to the Bureau pursuant to the General Local Government Code and the Emergency Management Services Code. Bill Number 1250, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land between the U.R.A. and the Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation for the Sell of Block 27B Lot 72 Located at 800 Bryn Mar Road in the Fifth Ward of the City Council District Number Six. Bill Number 1251, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest if any, in into the Following Publicly Owned Properties in the Thirteenth Ward of the City Designated in the D registry of Allegheny County, 308 Located at 803 North Homewood Avenue, Council District Number Nine. Bill Number 1252, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the U.R.A. and Bree Pepper for the Sell of Blocks 50M Lot 208 Located on the South Side of Hillcrest Street, East of North Graham Street in the Eleventh Ward, Council District Number Nine. Bill Number 1253, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest if any, in into the Following Publicly Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward of the City Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Blocks 26P Lots 156 and 57 Located on the South Side of Adelaide Street, East of Wichita Way, Council District Number Six.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Got some more. Got some more.
You have more?
I'm not done.
Okay, I apologize. Sorry.
Bill Number 1254, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest if any, in into the Following Publicly Owned Properties in the Twenty-Fifth Ward of the City Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County Located between Federal Street on the East and Perry's Field Avenue on the West, just south of where Federal Street becomes Federal Street Extension, Council District Number Six. Bill Number 1255, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest if any, in into the Following Publicly Owned Property in the Eleventh Ward of the City Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County Located on the East Side of North Aiken Avenue, North of Black Street, with the Part of Said Property being more particularly located between Blocks 83A, Lot 48, and Blocks 83A Lot 51, Council District Number Nine.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Saying none, the bills are not ready for final pass, ah, final action. All in favor of the passage, will it, when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions, and we'll begin with a final action vote on Bill 1304, the Declaration of Disaster Emergency with Councilman Lavelle. Councilman Lavelle.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill 1304, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for 28 Additional Days, thereby making the Declaration effective until April 13, 2021, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Oh, wait. That's what I say. Is there any discussion? Saying none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill? But I, when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to meeting announcements. Uh, this afternoon with sessions at three and 3:30, council will hold a briefing to discuss the PUC termination requirements. Uh, council will meet tomorrow morning, Wednesday, March 17th, for the Standing Committees Meeting at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak, please fill out this sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m., Wednesday morning. You may also register by calling the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138 by the registration deadline. Uh, is there anything from members?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross and then Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President. I, uh, members, I wanted to speak briefly about the emails that I sent you last night about the total number of board members at PWSA. Um, so just a little bit of fact finding. We've held these nominations for, um, interview. So we didn't have to have this discussion today, but I did want to tell you that I have in front of me several documents, um, including the original incorporation papers from 1984 of, uh, the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. Um, as you know, that when a municipality in Pennsylvania creates an authority, that authority remains accountable to the governing body of that municipality. In this case, it is the City Council of the City of Pittsburgh. There is a clear pathway in the language that I sent you in the Municipal and Authorities Act in state law uh, for changing the size of a board. Um, and it is clearly spelled out what an authority must do. It amends its Articles of Incorporation, first at its board, but then it brings that amendment as a proposal to the, its city council. And then it goes through a public process like all of our legislation. There can be discussion on it. The public can know about it. And that city council can either approve or reject that amendment to the Articles of Incorporation. I stayed up late last night and had some conversations with some PWSA board members and heard back from what they think their, um, attorney for PWSA believes that they are somehow exempt from the Municipal Authorities Act because those Articles of Incorporation from City Council in 1984 don't specifically say that there are seven members. Those Articles of Incorporation name seven members. Um, and so I believe that the attorney for PWSA is what we would call splitting hairs. But and there's, there's no reason, um, to do that. There's a clear pathway spelled out in state law. And I'll just kind of point out, it took me a few days to figure this out, so I apologize. I didn't talk about it earlier. Um, we got an email from the administration with the three names for PWSA, but the only one member is retiring, and that's Paul Legger. And so the number, total number of board members would go over seven. And that I learned that the PWSA and Councilman Strasburger can, can speak to this. I think it was when she was on the board last February, February of 2020. Amended, it's not its Articles of Incorporation, but amended its own bylaws. So we can talk more about this. I assert that an authority in the state of Pennsylvania cannot just run around acting like a private corporation and, um, amending its own bylaws and, and claiming its own authority that way, but that it is, um, subject to oversight by its governing body, which is the City of Pittsburgh. And, um, if it's not subject to its oversight, then it is not acting like a public authority. So that's all I'll say today. I'm sure we'll have lots more reading and studying to do about this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, and then I saw Councilwoman Strasburger, and I know you probably want to respond to the PWSA thing. Uh, Councilman Kraus, same subject?
No, I don't. Mine's different. I'd be happy to wait. Sure.
Do you mind if Councilwoman Strasburger gets a chance to respond since she serves on the board? I think it's.
I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmen, and thank you, Councilwoman Gross. I want to speak very clearly about what Councilwoman Gross was just talking about because she's speaking in terms of black and white, and I think there's a lot of gray area here, which the law often is, as we know. So, um, she mentioned the. So she mentioned the municipal, the Pennsylvania Municipal, Municipal, uh, Municipality Authorities Act, the N A A. In certain sections of that. So the section that we were talking about says that. Essentially, if any, any, any time that the. Articles of Incorporation change for the municipality, for the authority we're talking about, then it has to go to the governing authority, which is city council. What the lawyer for the P W S A is asserting is that in this case, when we're talking about the size of the board. The Articles of Incorporation do not need to be amended. Therefore, there's nothing triggered that would go to council and that's what we're talking about here. I don't think we're talking about P W S A acting like a private corporation. What we're talking about is. You know, and specifically, the size of the board has to be above five. That's it. It just so happens that when P W S A was formed, there were seven members. Now we're talking about expanding the diversity on the board in terms of gender, in terms of ethnicity, in terms of geographic. Location of the board members. And for that reason, you know, nine can be a more diverse board than seven. But there's nothing in it that says that. That to do so, the P W S A board has to amend its bylaws. And therefore, there's nothing in it that says it has to be approved by council. Council says it has to has authority to approve or disapprove the. The nominees that come through, which is what we're doing now, but there's nothing specifically that says. As, as the lawyer vetted, says that they may, but they don't have to. It just has to be above five. So that's what we're talking about here. It also says that. Under five oh six seven D seven, that the authority may. Through its bylaws, manage and regulate its affairs. The board acting within its powers has set the members above the, the. The Authority Act's minimum requirement consistent with Articles of Incorporation. So just another section that sort of. Underscores the powers of P W S A. So I'll leave it at that, but I wanted to be clear about what we're talking about here.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and any other members on that same subject?
Madam President. I have a little, I have two things to say, but one thing about this, I'll say that now, then I'll ask you to come back to me later. So if you remember when we had the blue ribbon panel recommendations. I said on that day to them privately, I've said publicly that I would never ever approve a process. That eliminated city council's ratification of the board members. And I think that we can have this conversation, but I, I would cer- certainly suggest that the conversation should be. Council deciding how many members we think they should have. It doesn't matter how many people they send over. Because if we want it to be seven members, we simply won't ratify the other two. So it's not, we don't, I, I think there's no reason to talk mechanically when we have the authority to decide. I mean, the conversation is, do we want a more diverse, diverse board? We think that's important. If we do, if we think nine is a good number, then we can, through our own power, we can approve nine. If we as the council decide that we think seven's a better number, then we say it's seven. And then any thing that comes over above seven, we reject. And so I, I want to suggest to you that we already have complete and utter authority to control the size of this board. We don't need to, we don't need to go through lawyers to do it. We have, this is in our hands and we can choose. So I would suggest that perhaps a better conversation is for us to decide among ourselves what we think. And agree, you know, five of us can agree, uh, at least, hopefully more than that, but we should have a. Internal conversation of what we think that number should be. And then whatever that number should be, we can communicate it to P W S A, at least this council can. And then we, you know, can act as a body to keep that board at whatever number we choose. So this, that's my, that's my sort of compromise suggestion.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other members? Same subject? Councilwoman Gross.
Or we can just keep talking about this today, so I'll just keep.
I want to get to Councilman Kraus because he was so gracious, so.
Well, you called on me, so I have the floor. And so section five six oh five of Municipal Authorities Act. Citing sections and reading from them is very clear. And I don't think that it is. Since it has stood here, I think since the nineteen fifties as a section and it does. Apply to all authorities in the Commonwealth. I just don't understand why. Members want to try in the, in the authorities board want to try to kind of. Enable this in any way because it's just very straightforward. It says an authority may amend, this is fifty six oh five A, an authority may amend its articles. For the following reasons. And number four is to increase or decrease the number of members of the board. Or to reapportion the representation of the members. All consistent with other provisions. And then it has number B, right, section B, fifty six oh five, section B. Procedure, there's a procedure laid out. All they have to do is amend the articles first at the, by the board. By the adoption of a revol- resolution setting forth the proposed amendment. And then directing that it be submitted to the governing authorities of the municipality. Which is the city council, the city of Pittsburgh. So that the proposed amendment shall be read as set forth in full. And stated in the resolution what clearly should be added or stricken, just like our own. Legislation must be clearly, the amendments must be clear and stricken out in a certain way. After the amendments have been submitted to the municipality. The municipality shall adopt or reject such amendment by resolution or ordinance and further. Section C, after the city council does that. They shall be executed under the seal of the authority and verified by two duly authorized officers of the corporation. And set forth the name and location of the registered office of the authority, you know, say who did it and where they did it. Then section D. Further specifies that there should be an advertisement. With the intention to file the Articles of Amendment with the Secretary of the Commonwealth. And I, I want to be clear that this is so clearly set forth as to not be confusing and. Also that to increase or decrease the size of the board doesn't merely mean some council today or tomorrow. Just kind of approves more members. That this is a very public process that should be discussed. At the city council of the municipality that created the authority. It isn't just like, well, today we feel like having twenty members, so we're just going to appoint ten more members. Oh, and the next day we feel like we're going to appoint ten more. City council should not do that under state law. It is very clear. That this is a public process and that we have to report it to the Secretary of the Commonwealth. So no, I don't think we just get to feel like we do it today and maybe not tomorrow. So I'll stop there. I was going to try to just talk about the facts.
You and I spoke yesterday, I appreciate, but I do want to say we have Wendy Kobe from. The Solicitor's Office and she can add clarity to this, but I would first get to Councilman Kraus. Because he waited so patiently. And then if everyone wants to come back to the subject, we can do that, but Councilman Kraus.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just a, a couple things. I have a request. Uh, of our, our, our city clerk, please. Yesterday in, in a meeting with some residents, I got some concerns that side yards. Are being purchased through our side yard program with the intent of resale for development. I don't know how true it is, but if it is happening, it causes me great concern. And I would like to know if we could send down a question to the law department. About if there are provisions within our side yard program that proves, that prevent resale. And if it does, for what period of time that might be. And if not, I'm wondering if we might have to consider some adjustment to side yard program to prevent. That kind of behavior. No one is looking to have someone buy a parcel of property for a very little money and then re. Resell it for someone to develop. And then just to, to speak briefly to. Some of the comments that were made, a public comment today, I, I don't want. Well-intentioned people to be misled by what is the role or the power of the council. And there were a couple of public speakers that called on us to do enforcement. And that is not the role of council. We're the legislative branch and, and we are not the enforcement agencies of. Of legislation that we passed and I just don't want the public to be misled that somehow the council has the power to. To be enforcement agents on any legislation that we, that we pass. And then secondly, it is true that we are being sued by the landlord service bureau. Over the passage of the rent, the eviction moratorium. And they have filed in common police court to call the. Legislation unconstitutional. I would just like to ask the law department, were they successful? In, in the attempt to. What's the word I'm looking for? To file a court injunction. Were they successful in filing a court injunction? And if so, what effect might that have on the city's ability to actually implement that legislation? I just need that for my own edification. I think the body would like that for their own edification. And then just lastly, I mean, I do know it's an election season and, and it does. As the process works, it comes down to whatever side of the equation you might, you might be on. But somehow this idea that Mayor Paduta was not engaged in the process. Of discussion and crafting of a rental eviction moratorium. It's just, it's a false narrative. And, and a couple of the speakers spoke to the involvement of Lindsay Powell and thanked Lindsay Powell for her engagement and it's. I just, I'm not sure they realized that Lindsay Powell is the deputy chief of staff to the mayor. And would be assigned by the mayor to be part of engaging in the process of crafting. The rental eviction moratorium. So I just felt the need to correct some of that information. And to ask if you would please to get those two. Not opinions per se, but just insight from the law department on the two things I asked about. I appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much, Councilman. That was, that was a lot of good information. Thank you. And do we have anything from other members? Seeing that I am going to ask Wendy Kobe from the law department to add some clarity to this concern about the P W S A board. Because it is something we really need to address. Wendy, could you, could you address the concerns?
She here now?
Yeah, she's on.
Oh, okay.
Good morning. Good, thank you. How are all of you? The law department is always happy to fulfill its obligation to represent this body. Always happy to, always happy, always happy to do our job. Council President, um, the law department would want a little bit of time to review the alternative perspectives that were advanced. As counsel person Strasberger stated. There is a gray version and there's a black and white version and as the parliamentarian, it is typically not. The law department's role to opine on these kinds of legal issues directly before this body. I would want to take this question back to the solicitor and we would get back to you with information in short order. Are you having this conversation today at three or three thirty? So I've been taking lots of notes, but I might have lost track about what you're holding to occur today, later today. Will you be?
Holding for interviews, we're holding for interviews.
Thank you for that clarification. By when would you need to know? By when would it be helpful for you to have the clarification about the role?
Probably within the week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see all of you.
Well, Madam President, may I? So Wendy, as long as you're here, I'm not sure if you had heard earlier, uh, two requests that I had to go down into the law department. Just briefly, if I could reiterate, I, I got some news yesterday that there's a possibility that some people may. Be choosing to purchase side yard lots for resale. And I was just hoping that you could enlighten us as to whether or not there are provisions within that ordinance that would prevent such things from happening. And if not, perhaps is there a way that we should tighten that ordinance up? And then number two, my request is to know whether the landlord service bureau was actually. Effective in filing the injunction against the ordinance that council passed. Recently for the moratorium on evictions. If so, what effect does that have or might that have or not have on the city's ability to enforce? I appreciate that.
Certainly. And so several of you have had some requests. I've taken notes about them. Madam Clerk, will you be sending a formal request to this solicitor?
Yes, please.
Okay, any other members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Burgess.
So I want to sort of. Say something not directly on this, but probably adjacent to it. Counsel. Speaks in mobile ways. We speak as individual members in our advocacy for our districts and our advocacy for the causes that we believe in. Counsel speaks during its deliberations, during its debate, during its very public exercise. Of passing and debating, amending legislation, we speak. But most powerfully, we speak through our votes, through the passing of legislation. Then five members, minimum, a minimum of counsel decide to speak, we speak through our vote. I've always been hesitant since I've been a member of council. There's this tension. Between wanting to sometimes make moral statements with our votes, knowing that those statements. Probably will not stand legal scrutiny. We, we do that, right? I struggle with that sometime, most notably when I first came, and it's been since I've been a member of council. When I first came on council. One of the first deals I struggled with was lost and stolen handgun legislation, which I agreed with one thousand percent. But I actually absolutely knew one thousand percent it was illegal. And could not be enforced and would not be enforced, right? So I struggled with that and that happens to me periodically. Because when we, when we, if the legislation is concerning. Other populations that are not mine to advocate for, I tend not to be as uncomfortable. Lost and stolen handguns, unfortunately, you know, deal with the population that I, that I represent, which is. You know, African Americans and advocate for and disproportionately affects them in terms of homicides. So when we put out legislation that we know cannot be enforced, will never be enforced, will never happen. We're doing false hope and we're doing that community a disservice. When, and so that's why I want to be, I, I think we should be careful. You know, when we talk about evictions, let's be honest. We know that evictions disproportionately occur to black women with children. So let's, let's, let's take the mask off all the conversations. We're not really having conversations about, you know. Middle class people. We're absolutely having conversations primarily disproportionately. Evictions occur to black females with children. That's proven. That's not my opinion. That's a fact. And so that's why I, I talked about before we did this, to be cautious, to not just. Not just do something that seemed right at the moment. But to make sure that it could hold legal scrutiny because we knew it was going to be sued. When, and, and I want to, I, I think, and I'm just, this is my opinion. When we speak as a body, at least to the issues that I care about. Let's make sure we're not giving these populations false hope. because they don't live in affluent communities. They don't have access to powerful people and family members. They do not live um, in places that are desirable. So for, and every time counsel speaks as a body, I wanted to be clear that to the best of our ability, at least to poor people, um, and in particular African-American people that are disproportionately poor in this country and in the city because of institutional racism, that we are being clear that when we pass something, we are not giving them false hope. We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not even during this crazy season. We're not reacting to the political pressure of the time or a time to, to get on the press conference or to sound right when we know it, there's issues. We should do everything within our power to make sure that piece of legislation, to the best of our ability, will pass every legal uh, matter because the community that we're advocating for can't, they don't have, they, they can't, they can't withstand. Um, they can't withstand the legal challenges. They can't withstand the uncertainty. We, we give them false hope and then we see them being punished after, after the press conference is over, after the pat on the back is over, those people are punished because of our, our attempt to do something, you know, with it, with the judge makes a stay, it, it gets held, you know, um, um, an injunction occurs, and then those people still are punished. And so I, I'm not, I, again, this is, I'm not making this accusation to anybody. Um, that's why when we hear the conversation, we pass legislation and let the courts decide why strongly kind of, kind of, I personally do not take that approach because the population that I represent and care about can't withstand it. I, i- if I lived and, and worked um, and advocated for a community that was upper class and had resources, then sure, I would have that opinion. But since I do not, and my heart is with, you know, as a preacher, as a person, you know, the book says, the poor you'll have with you always, and it's been in my religious training to give a priority to the poor and the needy, which has always been my, my stance, both as my service, my life is built on that concept, that the poor and the needy come first. And to those people who are poor and needy, and in Pittsburgh, poor and needy are disproportionately black. Let's be very honest about that. Um, when we deal with that population, I will not be silent and allow us to do this false hope thing that we do um, when it, when we have no skin in the game. When, you know, when, when the vote is over, um, we are not advocating to put resources into those communities. We are not, you know, and so I'm just saying, um, let's be very careful as we move forward as a council, especially at this time when racial reconciliation is the moment, is the, the issue of our time. That every time we set up these issues that deal with African-American people disproportionately, that we're doing our best not to give false hopes, but to give real resources, real solutions, real actions to help real people in the most timely way we can. And, and that's my opinion, and, and that's my, my hope. So that's what I think. Thank you for this moment.
Thank you, Reverend. I, you know, I share the same sentiments. You know how I, I feel about all this. Um, any other members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes, wait, to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
No move.
Thank you, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.